We'll call the meeting to order of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. Business Meeting Tuesday, May 15th, 2018, 7:00 PM in the Edwin Harshill Courthouse Edition, 11 Bank Street, Chicago, Virginia. Roll call.
Mr. Barber?
Here.
Mr. Blackstock?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Farmer?
Here.
Dr. Miller?
Present.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here. I'd ask that you observe a moment of silence with us, please. Thank you. Would you please rise for the President.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A couple of things to make the public aware of before we get to our agenda items tonight. Obviously, you realize from all what you're seeing, we're going to an electronic-based system, which will, once we get used to it, it'll end up being a good thing, it'll be better for you to see and have visual of what's going on. The voting will be done that way, so you'll be able to see it. Unfortunately, tech technology does have a few flaws, and one of them tonight is we couldn't get Mr. Barber's iPad going, so he's gonna do it the old-fashioned way, which he's been doing a long time, so it shouldn't be a problem. And I want to deviate a little bit from the normal process. We usually have some board comments at the end of the session, but tonight, I'm gonna make a comment before we start, because I think it's important for the citizens to know this, and a lot of our citizens tend to exit after their items are heard, and that's fine, but I thought it was important for the citizens to hear this. This board occasionally goes into closed session on things that are very sensitive in nature, it could be bad, probably could be for a number of things. But I want to make it very clear to our citizens and to the public, at no time do we ever take a vote in a closed session. We have discussion, there is perception from, you know, what the consensus may be, certainly that comes out of discussions, but we take no votes. And any time you see a letter that goes out from the chairman of this board, rest assured that that's not that individual speaking, that's the board speaking, because they give us direction on what we are to send out, what we're not to send out. So just wanted to clear that up for the public, because it's been a lot of uncertainty about that over the last period of time, so strictly only for clarity's sake, so we'll move on with this agenda. Are there items to be added to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add under 12(c) discussion and maybe a vote, a vote on resource officer grants, floor resource officer grants.
Second. Okay, we will need to add that under new business item, but before we vote on that, do we have any other modifications to the agenda? Consent agenda. Oh, as far as, we need to, Mr. Chairman, we need to delete the M, the fire name as Department of Services in my way, because we'll need that from the agenda. Now can I get a motion, second? Add those two items.
I make a motion to amend the agenda as Mr. Scares and I requested.
Mr. Blackstock, make the motion. All right, I hit the button, so. Seconded by Mr. Scares. All right, any discussion on the motion? Okay. Call for the vote. Oh, the votes, bud. Yes, bud. Barbara Butts, yes. The vote is unanimous. Thank you all. Now we have the approved working agenda. Mr. Chairman? Yes, certainly. Dr. Miller makes the motion to approve the revised agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Davis, I think, to Dr. Miller. Dr. Miller hit your, but that's okay, we'll move on. Any discussion on approving the agenda? Remind me. Close the screen. Okay, call for the vote. I got a second, Joe's second.
No, even.
No. Dr. Miller, please.
I'm saying Joe's second, but it's just not a voting.
Can you restart the motion? Okay. Seconded by Mr. Davis. Motion made by Dr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? Call for the vote. Please bear with the citizens. Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Davis moves to approve the agenda. Consent agenda. Mr. Scares seconds. Any discussion on consent agenda? Mr. Barber, the G, oral vote. The motion carries unanimously. Consent agenda item, we'll go down front for one of them, because we have Business Appreciation Week, and I think Matt Rowe, Ms. Davis, Ms. Burkholder, and Mayor Fornexter are gonna join Matt at the front, and if the rest of us could go down, we have something Matt's gonna read.
I'd like to create a proclamation here that states, whereas Pennsylvania County, Virginia, is pleased to have a thriving base of business and industry to support our local economy, whereas these businesses provide essential employment opportunities for the citizens of our county, and whereas their businesses and industries provide local revenue from which the entire local citizenry benefits, and whereas these businesses and industries also make significant contributions in our county by promoting educational opportunities for our children and promoting a variety of activities which increase our area's quality of life, and whereas the Board of Supervisors and the county citizens recognize and appreciate these businesses and industries. Therefore, the Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim the week of June 4th through the 8th, 2018, as Business Appreciation Week in the county, and be it further proclaimed that a copy of this proclamation will be forwarded to local media sources, given under my hand the 15th day of May, 2018, Robert Mark Moore, Chairman, Pennsylvania County Supervisor, and David M. Smitherman, County Administrator.
procedure here, but I want to talk about two items on the consent agenda. I think it's important that we, as a board, know how these things affect personnel within the county. First one I want to pull out and discuss is courthouse janitorial services, where we award a contract that's seven I. I also want to pull out seven J, lawn maintenance contract that we award. Those two are the questions that we'll pull out and discuss.
Make a motion that we pull out and move it to new business?
It's already, they've already been approved, so you don't have to undo your previous vote. You would just have to make a motion to reconsider. Consent agenda, with those items removed, that require, that'll be your motion, the bars are second, bars are voted, it's important to vote up or down, and if it's granted, probably best to just put those agenda items on new business and discussing the new business section of this.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider the vote on consent agenda. Is that what you want, David?
Specifically, which items are you wishing to reconsider?
Items, seven J, lawn maintenance contract, and seven I courthouse janitorial contract for local units.
And so you want to, with your motion is to move those to the new, uh, new business action item?
I make a motion to remove those from the consent agenda and place them under the new business action items.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock to remove items seven I and seven J from the consent agenda and use, move it to new business. Any discussion on the items? We'll do a roll call.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes. Down to presentations, Anfor expansion update. I think we have Matt Rowe.
How are you, sir?
Good to have you back with us.
Good to see you. Mr. Chairman, board members, please be here this evening, and on the consent agenda, as you reviewed it, was the revised performance agreement for Anfor International's revenue project. Just like, you know, any change, as we're kind of working through tonight, you know, there's always, as far as, you know, some stumbling blocks and some adjustments that have to be made, and it's obviously always for the better. The market conditions changed with Anfor international, when we first announced the project back in January, steel prices were at one price, and then due to various factors in markets, steel prices changed drastically. But one thing that I think is very important is that with that change, you still have, as far as an existing business that is committed to the community, and at the end of the day, you still have, as far as North America's largest tank truck manufacturer, sitting right there forever. And so because of that, and it is what it is, locality sense weakness, as far as, you know, change in plans, they reach out, and a lot of their employees did reach out to Brian and family, and at the end of the day, Brian recommitted as far as to Pennsylvania County. So it's a progress, as far as you just approved a resolution for Business Appreciation Week, and I think that this is a great example of the types of businesses that we had in Pennsylvania County, and the fact that if we do appreciate them, if we support them, if we create a business environment that's supportive for them, they will in turn show that appreciation back to us by being willing to commit to us and stay and hire our folks, create partnerships like Anfor International has done. And so I think it's important for the public to know, as far as, because the performance agreement is a, you know, a public document, that the performance agreement approved by the board for 90 jobs and 2.5 million dollars with Anfor International, the county is looking at $62,500 total, all after the fact, based upon performance. And I just don't know many opportunities where you're able to create 90 good-paying jobs, create a 40,000 square foot expansion in a small town, and average that range per job as far as public funds and support. Those funds are going to, not Anfor International as far as the company, they're going back into them actually retraining the workforce for the newer technology being put into factor. So I wanted to make sure that the board, you know, was aware of, obviously, you know, that Anfor is very appreciable, of course, of Brian's speech, and I wanted Brian also just kind of come before you tonight to just give you the progress that's been made already to the consent agenda. Brian?
Thank you very much. Good to be here, everybody. Thank you for having me. First of all, I, on behalf of the board, the county, I do want to thank for you all for what you did for my family and the business a few months back. When I reached out, you guys stood up to the plate, and that shows a lot, because a lot of times, areas kind of forget about the guys that've been here, and they always focus on the next, the next big thing coming in. So the appreciation, you know, we did a lot of crap for everybody, to help improve the existing business is, was great, and thank you all for that. Unfortunately, as Matt said, some outside influences kind of forced us to change our direction. Nobody was more accepting that than me, but did they all, well, not did they all, but, you know, it took some time to kind of retool and rethink in how we can still do what we wanted to accomplish, but in a different way. So what we decided to do is, we're going to reinvest in our current facility and still hire the 90 jobs, but it's just like your house, maybe like the closet, you don't really know how much space you have until you've cleaned it up. So we're going to be retooling the whole facility, and we actually can, we figured out on paper that we, the output that you're going to get for the new facility, we can actually get out of our existing facility with a couple additions, and still be able to keep the 90 jobs and commit to that, which, by the way, as of today, we're all over a third hired out of the 90. They just hired 20, I think, 21 today, I think we're hiring two more, a person next week. So within the three or five year commitment, they haven't hired the 90 jobs, I'm already a third there within the first six to eight months, which is great. So I will, we're really going to exceed the $2.5 million investment, we're also going to be exceeding the 90 jobs, I know that for sure. The project itself is underway, we have retained Blair Construction to do the work on the facility, we're taking several modifications to the land themselves to be able to handle our increased employment, obviously parking, office staff, new fascia, office renovations, planned renovations. So we're hoping we can start doing certain things very soon. Building itself will begin for another two months, but I know, I'm actually, I hope we can talk to Blair tomorrow, we might get an update, but I think we're going to be, hopefully, once some permits come in, I guess, that we can begin doing some other things while we look for the additional building components to come, so we can actually get that out of the facility. So we're praying that with all that said, that we actually can be up and completed sometime, maybe fourth quarter, to be able to have dollars behind us and the dentists going into 2019, that we are ready to build full more with full production. So we're very excited about that. The business world for us is, we're growing very fast, and we need this additional output to handle our employees' business globally. With a recent partnership with a company in Iraq, export business, you know, we're bringing that business back here, visiting the county and keeping the money local, so we're very excited about that. So I want to thank you all again for what you've done for my family and my company, and I'll probably be back here again in a couple of years, I want to do something else because of the way it does, that I'm happy with it all, so thank you all very much. If you have any questions, I'll hopefully answer them.
Any questions from the board? We just want to thank you, we appreciate the new jobs and the legacy of a company that's already here, growing and prospering, and we hope you'll be back a few years, tell us you're doing it again, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If we can give any assistance from one end to the other of this board, we'd be happy to do it.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please pass side, I appreciate you along with Mom and Dad.
I will, I will, thank you.
Thank you. We are down to hearing of citizens. Each citizen addressing the board under Hearing of Citizens shall be a resident or landowner of the county, or the registered agent of such resident or landowner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in an audible tone of voice for the record, unless further time is granted by the chairman, she will limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to be addressed to the board more than once during Hearing of citizens. All remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body, and not to any individual member thereof. Hearing of the citizen shall last a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that has signed up to speak during said section who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next board meeting. Absent chairman's approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. We'll open the public hearing at 7:30. First person signed up is Michael Yates.
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is Michael Yates.
Yes, sir.
Honorable supervisors, I come before you tonight representing over 80% of the paid membership of the Tonsom Mills Club Booster Club, asking for help. There are several issues with our organization, I will not detail these rules tonight as they are internal issues. I am, the reason I am here is to ask for your help and request to address issues with our organization. Membership has held meetings, and a majority at those meetings has decided by thought that our leadership is insufficient in their duties. And we're told by Mr. Mark Moore, Director of Pennsylvania County Parks and Recreation, that we have no right to act as our own entity. We then reached out to Mr. Smitherman, Pennsylvania County Administrator, for clarification. Mr. Smitherman advised that we are our own organization, set with our own chapters and bylaws, and that the county has no input into our inner workings. Mr. Moore refuses to follow the ruling given by Mr. Smitherman and is interfering with our organization's business. We are following our bylaws, Mr. Moore in the past has not interfered in such issues as these. Leadership of our organization has changed due to the same issues in the past with no interference from Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore stated personal issues in this matter and is interfering with our wishes. We ask that you, as the Board of Supervisors, relate to Mr. Moore that he has no such power. We ask that we be allowed to handle our own business as allowed in our bylaws. This is a matter of the Tonsom Mills Club Booster Club and is not an issue for Pennsylvania County Parks and Recreation. Thank you for your time this evening and consideration. I also have this with helping your close quarters preparations, information possibly that's been asked between others who you have impacted. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Yates.
Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Ryan Alley.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'll be piggybacking on Mr. Yates. Honorable supervisors, there is a growing issue within the youth sports program in Pennsylvania County. Director of Pennsylvania County Parks and Recreation, Mr. Mark Moore, has become an increasing disturbance in the development of our youth athletes, and the individuals who volunteer their time to serve and coach. Mr. Moore has repeatedly intervened and disrupted what was once a very successful program. Mr. Moore is using his position to influence organizations and the memberships of these organizations. He has replaced coaches, coordinators, and officials with no just cause. He is using his position for personal propaganda and not for the betterment of the programs he is tasked to do. Parents and coaches are not allowed to speak directly to Mr. Moore on any issue. He requires that all communication be routed through individuals that he deems worthy. He holds no regular office hours for citizens to discuss issues. He does not regularly attend sporting events, and on the rare occasion that he is in attendance, will not speak or acknowledge anyone's presence. As a paid county employee, he is not held to the standard as the rest of the tax, is he not held to the standard as the rest of the taxpayer-paid positions? Do you think you would be sitting here tonight if you ignored your constituents? I think not. Mr. Moore needs to understand that he is held to the same standards as all county employees. I ask that you address these concerns of Mr. Moore, as we, the taxpayer citizens of this fine county, are not allowed. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Robert Schumay. Richard Schumay, sorry.
Richard Schumay, Westover District. Come tonight to finish what I started sometime back in the red light back. First off, we need to have a start off with a word of prayer. I finally come to you tonight to thank you for everything you've done to this country in the past. We also thank you for everything that you do in the future. We know it's a hard job. We also ask, say we want to thank you for being with the soldiers overseas, attacking us while we speak. These things mean asking your name. Last time I was fencing up what I started, getting close to a year brother. I was here just before I had a stroke, and I spoke on, I don't remember the item, I remember it just hit me back again, we talked about these meetings, two other meetings twice a month, and this board, not this board, but the board that was on at that time. And this board, not this board, but the board that was on at that time, decided we was gonna have one meeting a month instead of two. I couldn't figure out why we was gonna do that, that board just raised their own saddle, month before that. Then to come in here and cut the meetings in half, which cut our speaking time for the citizens of the county from six minutes to three. We had three minutes each meeting, and then we don't have one meeting, so we got one, three minutes a month. I come down off the phone and said something about it. And, uh, a couple of the, you supervisors, some of them are not here tonight, they're long gone. And they said that, uh, they didn't vote, they voted to have meetings right on. Come down here, right back where I'm standing, two of the fellows come down and said something about it. Well, I said something to Mr. Joe Davis about it. And he was a little bit disturbed that I called him by the wrong name. And I was sorry, went and shake his hand, and passed it, I was sorry, I dressed him off. And he couldn't hold his hands up, he wouldn't speak to me, wouldn't say anything. He said, quote, "You are just a stupid idiot." I turned around to left.
Your time, Robert Schumay, you kind of crossed over a line because you're only supposed to address the entire board, not any individual. Mr. Schumay was the last person signed up for hearing of citizens. So, we are closing the hearing of citizens at seven thirty-nine and move to public hearings. Pursuant, public hearings, pursuant to Article Five, Division Six of Fitzland County Zoning Ordinance, the board of supervisors have been empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues and zoning map changes in support of said order. In accomplishing this important task, the board is responsible for promoting the health and safety and general public welfare of the citizens of Fitzland County. The board must ensure that all of its decisions, regulations be directed to these builders and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, in the best interest of Fitzland County, its citizens, and its prosperity. We will open the public hearing rezoning case number R-18-008 at seven thirty-nine. Mr. Sides.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Case R-18-008. Richard Allen, Richard Adam Gillespie has petitioned to rezone four point two-two acres located on State Route 658, Dr. Maddle Road, in the Dan River Election District, from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District, specifically for agricultural use, uh, growing up to back. Once the property is rezoned to A-1, then all uses listed under Section 35-Nash on Saturday are permitted to use. At their May first, 2018 meeting, the planning commission voted unanimously eight to zero to approve the request. The staff summary is included in closed end of board package, and Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gillespie is here representing petition.
Apparently, Mr. Gillespie is not in attendance tonight, but as you see in your packet, it is a property that is currently under R-1, but it's surrounded by agricultural underground property.
More have any questions for Mr. Sides? Board's pleasure. We have a speaker, Mr. Davis.
Mr. Chairman's being in my district is, uh, Mr. Gillespie. He's a decorated Vietnam veteran who suffered Agent Orange. Uh, I appreciate his service to the United States of America and you and me, keeping us free. In the case of R-18-008, I recommend to the board, of course, and the comprehensive plan in Fitzland County, that we move to turn this over, rezoning, Dan River District, R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision to Agricultural District.
Do I have a second? Second. Motion made by Mr. Davis, signed by Mr. Miller. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, call for vote. Please vote. All votes have been casted except Mr. Barber's, and he's voting aye.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. The motion carries unanimously. Mr. Sides, please notify, uh, Mr. Gillespie. It's been resolved, and we close that case at seven forty-two. We'll open case number, R-18-009 at seven forty-two. And, Mr. Sides.
In case R-18-009, Joanne Piles has petitioned to rezone one point one-one acres located on US Highway 29 North in the Bannister Election District, from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to RML, Residential Wonky Family District, four, uh, construction apartments. Once the property is rezoned to RML, then all uses listed under Section 35-280 are permitted to use. At their May first, 2018, the planning commission voted unanimously eight to zero to approve the request. Staff summary is included in your board package, and Mr. Chairman, Joanne Piles is here to represent petition.
Did you have anything to add, Mr.? Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Piles or Mr. Sides? It's board's pleasure. Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir, Dr. Miller. Um, in case R-18-009, I'd like to recommend the passage of this request. Motion made by Dr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Davis, and I close the public hearing at seven forty-four. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please vote. Okay, Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously, as Piles's property's been resolved. Okay, we're down to public public hearings. Each person addressing the board on the public hearing shall step up with his or her name and district and his or her place of residency, or Dodge County Red Citizens, in his audible tone of voice for the record. Unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to ten minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at that time, unless the consent of the board is affirmed, given the extended. Given to extend the speakers a lot of time, absent chairman's approval, no person should be able to speak who has not signed up. Uh, we are opening public hearing for B-DOT secondary six-year improvement plan at seven forty-five. Mr. Sides.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I will invite Jay Craddock here with the B-DOT, with the Justletion Order. This is a routine action that this board takes every year. Uh, we work with B-DOT on the secondary program list, so I'll just bring up Jay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jay Craddock of Virginia Park and Transportation. Section thirty-three point two dash three thirty-one of the Code of Virginia, as amended, requires that the county board supervisors, in conjunction with Department of Transportation, formulate a six-year secondary road improvement plan priority list. This is done on a yearly basis. Tonight's public hearing is being conducted for fiscal years 2019 through 2024. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive public comments on the proposed secondary six-year plan in Fitzland County. I'll now read the priorities from the draft plan. All of the roads, roads I'm gonna be reading will be rural busting projects, which is the paved, unpaved roads. And I'll start off with the ones that are already on the plan that were put on last year. And I won't give all of the details of these, since they were brought up last year, but if you have any questions, feel free to stop me. Uh, the first one, and, and these are in chronicle, chronological order as, as far as the plan construction, starting with this construction season out to 2024. The first one is Route 644, Cooksburg Road, and that is the portion on the west side of Southern Fifty. Second one is Route 637, Jacob Road. Next is Route 800, Ridney Circle. Next is Route 817, Turkey Cock Mountain Road. Next is Route 706, Abbott Place. Next is Route 707, Mack Road. Then we have Route 713, Lester Road. Then there's Route 927, Hickey Road. Then there's Route 1070, Rogers Road. Next is Route 618, Farmer's Road. Next is Route 738, Bayless Drive. Next is Route 1062, Church Lane. Next is Route 656, Wild Road. Next is Route 609, Brights Road. Next is Route 607, Robertson Road. Next is Route 995, Happy Lane. Next is Route 698, Stone Road. Next is Route 644, Cooksburg Road, and that would be the portion on the east side of Southern Fifty. The next is Route 605, Pox's Road, and that's the portion coming off of Route 40 between Route 40 and 799. And then next is Route 605, Pox's Road, and that would be the portion between Routes 778 and Route 772. Next is Route 707, Cox's Bowl Road. Next is Route 886, Gandy Road. Next is Route 621, Ed Hardy Road. Next is Route 602, Moon's Road. Next is Route 669, Mellon Road. The next is Route 793, Cherrystone Lake Road. Okay, the next three will be ones that would actually be added to the plan, that are not already on the plan, that were discussed in the work session last month. So, I'll go ahead and read all the details on these. Uh, Route 774, Darby Road, from Route 774 to Route 40. This one is budgeted at $480,000 and would be scheduled to begin construction in July of 2024. The next one is Route 601, Hubbard Road. From Route 601 to 0.4 miles north of Route 601, that would get it just past the last house on that road. The road continues on further, but there are no houses once you get past that point. The budget for that one is $280,000, and it's also scheduled for July of 2024. The next is Route 638, Royal Mill Road. And that would go from Route 641 to 0.65 miles west of Route 641. The budget for that is $130,000, and it also will be scheduled for July of 2024. At this time, we solicit comments from the public concerned in this priority list. I would ask that anyone wishing to speak come forward and speak into the microphone so that we can have a clear recording of your comments. Also, please state your name and magisterial district for the record. Let me remind you that this is a public hearing and not a question and answer session. So, it's not to prolong the hearing for everyone. Anyone with questions can reserve them till after the hearing, and I'll be happy to discuss them at a time that's convenient. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Craddock. First person to sign up is Mr. Schreubesberg.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Supervisor. I heard him calling that list. I'm in Tunsill District, living on W Lane. And then hearing him call out all the things and him not knowing, not saying nothing about how many people live on them roads and all that stuff, and how long we've been dying to get on that one little list, and he's got right there. And hearing him say 2024 just makes my heart hit the floor, 'cause if you drive down our route, you know. I mean, we've been trying to get on that list since we did the development, and everybody that, that they're food down there, everybody was always promised we was gonna be on the list. We didn't meet the criteria to get on the list. But now I think we done met all our criteria to get on that list. So, I mean, all I'm asking is, at least y'all look at it or something. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you, Mr. Schreubesberg. Spokes, let's go to the list. Mr. Miller.
What route are we talking about? White Tail Avenue.
Good evening. Um, I am thinking of the same road that holds all of that Mr. Schreubesberg was, and it's one, I mean, uh, well, it's White Tail Avenue. And we have thirty houses there, and the road is terrible. The kids, the buses don't come down. We have to take the kids to the top of the road. The kids have to walk to the top of the road to catch the bus and things like that, and it's, uh, really inconvenient. We have people that aren't down the road, you have kids that are walking the street and going to the bus stop, things like that.
Next is, uh, Ms. Maverty.
Yes, my name is Mara Maverty. I live in 901 White Hill Avenue. The road we are on, the potholes are so bad, you never believe you should call anybody. So, I appreciate if they would put us on the list. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maverty. Next up is Mr. Tickle.
Good evening to each of you. My name is Lois Hileen Tickle. I live at 18 W Lane. Have lived there for, own the property for twenty years now. Built a house and resided there eighteen years. When we first signed our contracts and everything, we were told that within five to six years it could be paved. That was twenty years ago. We have done everything we can ourselves to keep the road in as good condition as we can with what funds we have, to no avail. As previously stated, there's, I think, more than thirty houses down there with multiple families. It's just, like I say, as Marilyn said, you could lose your car in the potholes. You're lucky if you can go five miles an hour for fifteen feet. And all the side roads are the same way. We've tried multiple times to get on the list, and it's been twenty years now. And I think it's time we finally get on the list, and maybe hopefully buses can come down there. It would be much safer. The roads affect our property values, you know, everything. You know, we pay taxes, just like everybody else. We've been paying taxes for twenty years and can't even get on the list. I appreciate your consideration if we can get on that list and make it safer for everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Tickle. Next up is, uh, Davey. Mr. Davey?
Hi, I'm David Davey, uh, living 540 White Tail Avenue in the Tunsill District. Our road is, we've come tonight to talk about the road. You can Google my address and look at satellite picture, you see the potholes. You see the potholes placed. You know, that's pretty bad. And up and down the road, people are, trucks are flying down through their, uh, shules goes up and went up and down through their, three hounds the other day because they broke something when they were, so, uh, we need some help on the road. We need it as soon as we can. We've got people that are elderly and ill, and we have to have an ambulance down there. It's a big problem you can have in there because they can't just skip over these empty bumps. And any help you guys can do would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Charles, looks like Eastwood.
I called it. They're down at 13. When I first moved the property on the fore knee, said that we had two years left before we keep it on there. 13 years later, we're not on that list. And what these people are talking about, these potholes, they're not kidding. Any one of y'all, go drive down that road. I wish you would. You'll see it our way then. They also gotta look at emergency vehicles coming out today. Somebody has a fire, you get a fire truck on in it, your house gonna burn down for the tire, the fire truck gets out. If somebody has a heart attack, oh, it's dangerous, somebody gets in trouble with police. It'll be fatal before they get there. You cannot go down that road no more than a few mile an hour if you value your vehicle. And we got a few on there that mom and daddy's paid for their vehicle, so they don't care, you know? But it, it, it's getting ridiculous. The trees are growing onto the road, and we tried to maintain it. I built, I maintained it. Mark Maverty, he maintained it for a while. Ms. Tickle's husband, God rest his soul, uh, he worked on it for years. But still, it's to no avail. We just don't have the equipment to take care of that road. It's a mess. And I wish each and every one, y'all, go look at that road and ask yourself, would y'all drive down? And I guarantee you, you get to the first turn, you'll turn around somehow or another. And I got a story, this is funny, people probably laugh. It was a couple of years ago, the road got so bad, potholes got so big, we literally had to stop for ducks swimming in the potholes. That's no joke. But I appreciate your time, and I hope you really consider us for this. We need it, we need that hill. Thank you.
Uh, next is Jerry Anderson.
Hey, y'all, hello, I'm Jerry Anderson. I live at 480 White Tail Avenue, drive over Virginia in the Tunsil District. And I'm here to talk about the road. The road is real bad. I've been there 18 years, and it's getting worse and worse and worse every year. They told me when I moved in, it was on the list, and we ain't been on some list yet. And like everybody else says, if you have a heart attack, your house burns down, you just, uh, you just out of trouble. You there, and I mean, what you gonna do? So if any help y'all could help, we really appreciate it. And it would increase the tax value of our properties if the state would bring anything over. Thank you.
Next up is Mr. Richard Sheemait.
I'll deal right down.
Thank you, Mr. Sheemait. Next up is Donna Smith.
I'm also a property owner of 1017 White Tail Avenue. I live at the very end of the road, it's the Mall of Jerk Road. Uh, we've had this problem for 20 years. Uh, we've done everything that we had possible. All I ask, y'all take us into consideration and business on this. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next up is Ms. Kim Stallings.
My name is Kim Stallings. I'm in the Tunsil District, and I too live on 1016 White Tail Avenue. I've been there for 20 years, was told that we would, we were on the list. Time comes to be paid, we get told, no, we're put on the back road. We're still there. Last year, it was so bad, we were wondering how we were gonna get our kids to the bus stop, how we were gonna get in and out of this road to go to work. Through people giving extra money, a generous donation, we got the road back semi-good. Now it's deteriorated again. We're in the same boat. We need on this list, we are taxpayers. I'm at the very end of the road. God forbid if something happened, that ambulance would never get down there to me or to my children in time. I think we have waited 20 years, we deserve this. I don't care if it doesn't get paved, just take it over and maintain the gravel. I've bought to live on a gravel road, I do not mind living on the gravel road. I just would like to see me be able to drive my car down and not, and not have to tow my kids a mile to the bus stop. And then I have to worry about how they're getting home in the rain. I have to take off work to go pick them up from the bus stop. Any help that we can be given would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stallings. That completes the citizens that signed up for our first public hearing, the day of the three. Questions from the board?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Cracker. Mr. Cracker. Back a year, several years ago, I think it was, uh, Randy, who's the President of the District?
Randy Hamilton.
Randy Hamilton. Him, myself, him and Mike Carlson, we looked at this road, and at the time, there was several roads in my district. I was aware of, when they built these roads, they didn't build them state standards, and they told these people, you know, you move in here, the states will take the road over, and you know that's, of course, that was a myth because the road wasn't state standard. And one of the obstacles we couldn't get past on this road, the one on Brookside, was this, this sign stating that would never be taken over here. And my understanding is, look, the state legislation has taken, taken that out now?
Yes, that's correct. And yes, you're right, if, if you look on the platte of that subdivision, there's no more platte that says, you know, this road was not built to be like standards, and it will never be taken into the VDOT system as state-maintained highways, um, for both these roads. But the legislation has changed, and there is a means to where we can take the road now. First of all, let me back up. Neither of these roads can be on the six-year plan, which is what we're here about tonight, because they're not state-maintained roads. Before we can apply rural, rural budget money to a road, it has to be state-maintained first. So the first step is to get it into the system, and then we can get, look at getting it on the list.
As I say, convenient, go back and look at this road and the one on Brookside, because that's two of the worst roads in this county. There's no doubt about that. And I noticed on this six-year plan, I think my fellow board members were support, I only said one road south of White Oak Mountain on this whole six-year plan, am I missing something? Is that correct? On this particular six-year plan? I don't recognize any roads south of White Oak Mountain, so I think, I think my board members are supportive.
That's probably because Mr. Hall got them all put on a use of it.
I didn't talk to the question, I agree with him. But, uh, like I said, could we, we need to get together and go look at this road in Brookside and see?
Absolutely, and I'm very familiar with the road too. Or at least White Tail, I'm not as familiar with, though. But, um, one, one stipulation is every, every person that owns property touching that road will have to agree to it. If there's one person that doesn't want the road taken out of the state system, that's like everybody agrees. That's just the first hurdle to get through, and it, it, it's a process. It's not a, it's not a matter to say it until it's missed. And keep in mind, there's 150 other unpaid roads in Pennsylvania County that are already state-maintained. And what the, Ms. Stallings mentioned about, she would be happy if we would just take it over and leave it as a gravel road?
Yeah. Yeah. We'll take whatever we need, we're gonna have.
That does make a lot of sense. I just wanted to, I mean, it, it makes sense. It really does, since we already have gravel roads in the system. But at this point, there's no means for us to do that. The only way we can take a road into the system is if it's paved.
Anyway, I just wanna let you know, I'm gonna get with Mr. Cracker, we'll come out and look at the road again, because last time I went there, the answer was we'd come back with it, that it was in the platte, that it would not be taken over, that it, that was the obstacle to be gotten over, at the timeline, I think it was 20 years.
Right.
So you add two of the things to at least get the process going.
Yeah, it used to be where it had to have been built, Carter, July of 1991, and then they changed it to where it just has to be built more than 20 years ago, so it's a moving timeline. So eventually, every road will be eligible if it can meet all the other requirements.
Thank you. Mr. Chair. Mr. Davis.
Uh, how long, how, how long is this road? White, was it White Tail? How long is the road?
A mile. A mile from 41, since turns a mile down to the bottom.
How many, how many people live on that road?
Thirty-four residents.
Thirty-two.
So the road is over a little, over a mile, right?
Yes, sir.
If I was that, okay. Just, you guys hang on, please. Uh, I, I, I got a reason for this. How much rock do you think it would cost? I mean, how much, how many tons do you think it would take to cover that road? Well, let's say the worst part's what the wash-off is, 'cause I know this, I got an insurance adjuster in that group right there that, uh, has been pegging me since 2015. So, um, and here she is, so it's time to answer up. So, how much rock would, since you've been on the road, you know, Mr. Ball, I think? What are the worst spots on there? I mean, what do you think? How much ton, ballpark figure, just, just a couple of rough spots for right now?
It's been several years since I've been out there. It's just been a while on the road because he has property ownership.
That's correct.
But, uh, so I haven't been to it recently. At that time, it wasn't too bad. I think probably a good, just a ballpark number is $175,000 per mile for a road like that. So you're probably looking at close to $175,000 to do the entire road, not just the rough spots.
In rock?
No, to the surface.
No, no, I'm talking about putting gravel down on the worst spots, ballpark figure. Tonnage?
I, I couldn't tell. I'm not a citizen. I mean, you're probably talking at least $100,000 just to put six inches of stone down and not think it. You know, rock, by the time you get it hauled out there, you're looking at, uh, $600 a, about 30 tons. This is gonna take a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cracker. Mr. Blackstock.
I'd just like to, I feel, I, I feel for you because of the citizens that have spoken tonight, and I want you to know that you're not the only, uh, group of citizens in this catch-twenty situation. I have been working with VDOT ever since I got involved with the first approved subdivision in Pennsylvania County, uh, to get their roads taken into the state system also. And those roads were not built to state standards. And I've done some digging, and you don't wanna hear this, but I mean, I've had, I've had meetings with my own, some people in my district. Part of the explanation from VDOT that I have received is, when you bought those lots, you bought those lots at a reduced price because they're not owned, well, I'm, I'm just telling you, the land was not on a state highway, so the lot was not worth as much as it would have been on an asphalted highway. Evidently, a developer, somebody has told y'all that it was on a plan. I have two sites in my district like that, and they never were on the plan. It was only developers' plans so he could sell them. And I, it sounds like y'all got caught in the same situation. And so, you know, I, I feel for you because I think probably I've got two or three miles of, of roads over there like that with multiple houses on them. And I meet with those folks every so often to see if plans and things have changed, because rules do change with VDOT. And hopefully, sooner or later, there'll be a program to get folks like y'all on this, on, on, on a plan to get it done. It's frustrating, now, I know, I said you know your frustration, but it's not, it's not just a nice way to, it's not just y'all, it's, it's multiple areas in the county. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion when approved, the six-year plan is presented. VDOT Secondary Six-Year Plan, F by 2019 through F by 2024, will be approved, and the county administrator is authorized to sign any necessary documentation.
Do I have a second? Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, second by Mr. Davis. Any further discussion? Please cast your vote. Mr. Ball? Yes. The vote is unanimous.
So, Mr. Cracker, let me know when it's convenient, if you wanna go around with it. Thank you, all right. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Cracker. We're down to public hearing, item number two, uh, revisions to Chapter Nine Vehicle License, so open the public hearing at 8:12. Mr. Hall?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have a public hearing for several revisions to Pennsylvania County Code, Chapter Nine, which deal with vehicle license fees. These revisions are made necessary by the fact that, um, the board in its most recent county budget changed, uh, the amount, uh, that Pennsylvania County is going to charge for vehicle license fees to match what the state code allows. We had outdated sections in Chapter Nine that reflected the old price. Now, instead of having to have a public hearing every time the board changes that fees, potentially during the county budgeting process, we now just have language that says the Board of Supervisors will annually set these fees via the county budget each year. Also, um, recently, the board gave citizens additional time to pay their personal property taxes and vehicle license fees, and they have moved, uh, the due date from June 5th to June 20th. So we have several sections in Chapter Nine that just reflect that new June 20th date. The Board of Supervisors Legislative Committee met on this, uh, last Tuesday and unanimously recommended these revisions to the full board tonight following the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. We did have a citizen sign up, Mr. R.L. Sheemait Jr.
I'm Richard Sheemait Jr. I'm very interested. Some of this information is thin in the paper, if you can believe it all, and if I can understand it all. But I don't like what I'm hearing. All of this stuff coming to you at one time, and since Mr. Sullen's back here, the taxes is doubled, everything we get's doubled, and I'm wondering, who are we gonna get to rob to, to get the money to pay for it? I can't understand, and we need to, need to have a monthly bill, because you getting so high now, you can't, I can't afford to pay it. I'm gonna have, I'm just gonna quit paying, and let them come over and seven, I think in probably 10 years, over seven, I'll be dead by then. So, I think we all just need to quit paying tax and take that chance, because most people here are past the death. And we, we just cannot afford the kind of money that you supervisors are trying to bring on us.
Mr. Sheemait completes, uh, the list of sign-ups. I will close the public hearing at 8:16, and open it for the board's play.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Scare's makes his motion, right on the second. Motion made by Mr. Scare, second by Mr. Blackstock. Is there any distinction? Is there any, Mr. Davis?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the revisions, Article Two, vehicle license of Chapter Nine of the Pennsylvania County Code as presented.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. Mr. Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. We're down to public hearing revisions to Chapter Seventeen, solid waste disposal. We'll open the public hearing at eight seventeen. Mr. Hunt.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have a, uh, public hearing for proposed revisions to Pennsylvania County Code, Chapter Seventeen. Chapter Seventeen deals with solid waste disposal fee. Um, the first set of revisions to Seventeen dash four C and E and Seventeen dash five B, what that does is, we had outdated tipping fees listed in the ordinance. Uh, what, again, just like with vehicle license fee, what the proposed changes allow, or the board of supervisors, just as the board of supervisors will annually set these fees in the annual budget resolution. So that means every time you change these fees, you wouldn't have to have another public hearing, because there's already a public hearing on the annual budget resolution. Second set of changes, revisions to Seventeen dash four, Section I. Uh, this is a, uh, very, um, old county ordinance, and frankly, it was poorly written, and it had very specific language about the amount of tonnage each day that could go across the scales. It even said Thursdays, you could only have blank, uh, tonnage that goes across the, uh, scale. So all we did was just, our solid waste tonnage requirements and limitations are included in our county's landfill permit that we get from the state and the federal government. So all we did was just tie those tonnage rates to that permit. So if our permit changes and our tonnage requirements change, uh, we won't have to change our solid waste fee. Also, now with First Piedmont picking up some of our solid waste, um, we didn't want to be hamstrung by these archaic daily limits. And, uh, main event, Article Three, uh, is the re-implement, proposed re-implementation of the solid waste disposal fee. That is similar to what we previously had with, uh, just a few primary changes. Those changes, uh, primarily being, uh, contained in the exemption state, uh, section, and I'm scrolling to it right now, um, those exemptions are found on page two sixty-one and two sixty-two of your packet in Section Seventeen dash eighteen. And, uh, there's proposed no longer to be a vacancy affidavit. And now, uh, whether or not you pay, or required to pay, the solid waste fee is determined based on whether or not a dwelling is inhabitable, meaning can be lived in on January 1st. If it's uninhabitable, as determined by the county's building official following an inspection, you would be exempted from paying the fee. Additionally, in this, um, we've changed, uh, the due date so that this is proposed to be paid once a year in December. And unlike in the past, um, there will be, there's proposed to be no preparation of the solid waste fee, meaning similar to if you own personal property in Pennsylvania County on January 1st. If you had a habitable dwelling on January 1st, you were responsible for the full fee for the whole year, even if you dispose of that dwelling on January 2nd.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Uh, we did have Mr. Richard Sheuade sign up. Sheuade.
More tax, more tax, that's all we know. And the tax that we were paying for the garbage fee, I remember when it started, it was a dollar more. And it was gonna stop as soon as we got the money at the table. That's been 50 years ago, I reckon, and we haven't stopped yet. In fact, we, we went up and finally cut it out. Now, the last, about the last 10 years ago, my mother passed away, and her house was not the best in shape anyway. Nobody lived in it since she passed away. The house was built in 1932. Building inspector or somebody come over there and looked at it and said we didn't have to have, and have to pay the fee. Now, you said we got to have it, folks, to have that Christian. We have that Christian to provide a security. It's not, the well is not fixed so in white and front water out there. And it's just not, it's not a picture so I live. Yet still, we haven't carried a bag of garbage to the dump in over 10 years. And yet still, you want us to pay double the garbage fee, and you got to pay it all at one time? I don't know where the money's coming from. I know I've been up here all night, but you folks have just about taxed us to death. If I went so close, going to the cemetery, I would go over there. I, I would stay in the county, every time I look at your board of supervisors, they take the money out of your pocket, standing in front of you.
Mr. Sheuade was the only individual that signed up, so I close the public hearing at eight twenty-two. What's, uh, pleasure? Motion made by Mr. Scars. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Farmer.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the provisions, excuse me, revisions to Chapter Seventeen of the Pennsylvania County Code as presented.
Motion was seconded by Mr. Farmer. Any discussion on the motion? Please cast your vote. Mr. Ball.
Yes.
The vote carries unanimously. Okay, we're down to a public hearing revision of Chapter Twenty-five, procurement policy. I'll open that public hearing at eight twenty-three. Mr. Hunt.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have a public hearing on proposed revisions to Chapter Twenty-five of Pennsylvania County Code. Chapter Twenty-five is where the county's curament standards have been codified. We recently, uh, it was brought to our attention by our auditor that new federal law has changed, and that if we, uh, wanted to accept, uh, federal money for federally funded, direct federal aid, federal pass-through aid, um, for federally funded projects, we had to adopt the new federal procurement standards. So on page, um, two hundred and eighty of the packet, you can see that we are proposing to do that tonight. It references an Exhibit C that is incorporated by reference into our Chapter Twenty-five. And Exhibit C just has these new federal procurement rules. So this change was required by our auditor, and all it does, it's a housekeeping matter, it allows us to legally accept federal money, um, because we now are agreed to abide by these new federal standards.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Uh, no one signed up to speak, so I'll close the public hearing at eight twenty-five. Board's pleasure. Do I have a motion, do I have a second?
Chairman, I make a motion to adopt the revisions to Chapter Twenty-five, excuse me, procurement policy of the Pennsylvania County Code as presented.
Motion was made by Mr. Scars, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion? Please cast your vote. All votes have been passed, Mr. Ball.
Yes.
The vote carries unanimously. We'll move to public hearing number five, revisions to Pennsylvania County Code, Section Thirty-six dash one. We'll open that public hearing at eight twenty-six. Mr. Hunt.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, what you have before you is proposed, proposed revisions to Chapter Thirty-six dash one of Pennsylvania County Code that deals with, uh, an assessment for courthouse construction, renovation, maintenance. This is like a bad penny. This is actually the third time you've seen this, and I promise you it will be the last. What this allows is, since the Pennsylvania County courthouse complex has been determined following an inspection by, uh, the Department of General Services to be, um, on, to be in non-compliance with the, uh, most recent Virginia courthouse facility guidelines, and this complex cannot be feasibly renovated to correct such non-compliance, the state code, um, allows Pennsylvania County to charge, instead of three dollars for certain criminal and civil court actions, to charge two additional dollars to five dollars. And that money is put in a fund and can only be spent to, uh, potentially one day rectify the non-compliance. Um, when we sent this to the Virginia Supreme Court, who monitors these funds, they asked for a few changes. Those are outlined on page three fourteen of your packet. There are four bullet points, and as you can see, they wanted a less broken by law language added into Section Thirty-six dash one C. They wanted, uh, to remove and and insert or into PCC Section Thirty-six one C, insert not into Thirty-six dash one C. And the biggest issue for counting purposes and auditing purposes, the Supreme Court, I was notified through Judge Barrow, that they wanted to change the effective date of this audit's, um, from, uh, we previously had it in March to, I believe, June 1st, 2018, so that it coincides, uh, with whatever accounting rules they had. So it's really just a housekeeping matter. You've already approved this twice, we're just making those four changes as detailed in the packet on page three fifteen.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. We did have one citizen sign up, Mr. Richard Sheuade Jr.
This is a favorite piece of mine. I believe Mr. Smither, I stand corrected, somebody, and I thought I was talking to him again, said that we had to have, the judge said we had to have this ramp fixed so you had to walk all the way around the building to get in. I noticed when I left, over the last minute, a lot of people went through this other door that are not employees. They claim employees have a right to use this door over here with a key. I can hardly get around that damn step. I would like for you people that the judge done it, I think this board owes the general public, to this community, to go and see if they can get provisions, some kind of reason, for people to use that door instead of having to go all the way around the building. I call over here the other day to see about going into the property of us up here. And I was told, be sure you don't bring a knife and all that, be sure you go around to the back. And I said, you mean I have to go around to the back to come into the front? And you know what? That is a crying shame. Now, this place, go to your county courthouse, I know you come over here to court, you all not get in trouble, you get, have to come over here, but to come over here and look after business, tend to pay your tax, you got to go around and come in the back door. That's a crying shame. And I thank you folks, me, the judge, because I mostly heard you have a little common sense. And explain to them that there is people that's not able to walk up and down these steps. And they don't have any power to push them in the chair. And go over there and fix something, nothing to go in but the back door. And you take that, you got to walk a long ways up the hill here. But I, I thank you people who supervise, oh, it's the citizens of Canada, pick up the solution, come in here, look after county business, and that come in the back door.
Uh, Mr. Sheuade was the only person that signed up, so I closed the public hearing at eight thirty-one. So what's the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, having taken this job, 2016, I do remember very clearly, Sheriff Kate Berger, H.F. Haymore, several other, others were at a table that we were present with. And this situation, Mr. Sheuade, is a state mandate, if I'm not correct. Am I correct, that county attorney?
Well, we, we ask for our courthouse to be, um...
We, we're getting off course. We've got a motion.
I was just asking.
Second.
Okay, but no discussion yet.
Yeah, let's get to discussing. Uh, motion was made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Blackstock.
He had made the motion, yeah.
Yep.
I made the motion that we adopt the revisions of Pennsylvania County Code, Section Thirty-six dash one as presented.
Motion was made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Blackstock. Now we're looking to put discussion, Mr. Davis.
All right, we were, I do pardon, pardon my accusations there, too. Uh, we were all, we were told at that table, and I'm not gonna get you to stand up, Sheriff, because you said enough, we were put in position, Mr. Sheuade, that that was coming one way or the other. So the, the courthouse has certain dollars put in place, and that's not only for the protection of the citizens, but that's definitely the protection of the counselors and the judges. And that's the, the day we're living in, and it's not gonna get any better. So these are the reasons these things are put in place. And a lot of things are out of our hands, uh, that are carried down from the state level that we have to handle. And we will, and we do, and we shall comply. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak? Seeing none, please cast your votes. Uh, all votes have been cast, Mr. Ball.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. We're down to public hearing, solid waste enterprise fund budget amendment. We'll open the public hearing at eight thirty-eight with Ms. Vanderheide.
Yes, the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors adopted the FY 2019 budget at their April seventeenth business meeting totaling $183,762,465. This budget did not include the solid waste enterprise fund at that time and must be included in the FY 2019 county budget prior to July 1st to continue lawful operations. Tonight's public hearing is being held to consider citizen input on the re-establishment of the solid waste enterprise fund with a total budget of $4,73,940. These amendments were properly advertised in the Star Tribune on May 2nd and will be primarily funded by a collection of a $120 solid waste fee to be collected annually on each inhabitable dwelling in the county. With this amendment, or these amendments, the revised FY 2019 budget will total $187,836,405, as shown in the advertised, um, document that's attached to your board packet.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderheide. We did have, uh, several folks sign up for this, uh, Mr. Robert Gilbert.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Robert Gilbert, and I'm manager of the district, and the town chairman. And my concern is twofold. I'm not against, uh, supporting our landfill. I know that's our responsibility. But I think the timing is pretty bad, in fact, that we just had an assessment which increased our taxes. We had to, add on, three percent that you've added on. And then we have another, in essence, another tax, in terms of doubling what we had before. I think that, um, we've had problems with illegal, you know, landfills. Should they be gone after first? And then if you're short, come back to the county citizen. I'm not against maybe putting it back like it was, the five percent, but the ten, the doubling, I think, is sort of cruel at this point in time, especially in rural, and I'm a golden people, we have an accounting, um, including myself. Secondly, but my most important, uh, concern is the definition of what is considered to be exemptions from the assessment. exemptions from the assessment. I happen to have a property in town that I'm trying to sell. It is inhabitable, but it's unoccupied, has been for over a year, thirteen months in fact. I have a property in the county, same thing, it's inhabitable, but has been unoccupied for, what, three years, but it's for sale. Do I still have to pay those? I'd say it's wrong for me to pick something I'm not using. I haven't had, pick up, the town chairman, for example, has not charged for any pickup of church services over the last six months, it's been for sale. Once the wardens got off, they took off the tax, they took off the assessment of the fee. And the property in the county, of course, the same thing, I had in our county. They did for a while, but they took it off. So my question is, would you reconsider the definition of what is exemption, what are exemptions? Right now, according to Mr. Hunt, they only exempt if you don't have a property on your land, if you don't have a property, a building, or something, and you have a building on your land, or if it's, if you have a private collective, or if the building is true, then inhabitable. That is the definition right now. But what about if it's unoccupied? It's an unproducing income, it's another tax, something that can happen. So I appreciate your concern about at least considering how much you want to add on. And secondly, please consider those, any motion that you consider some additional exemptions for this property.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. All right, next up is the Chair, the Niels.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my concern is similar to the previous speaker. And I would hope that the board would not put positive fun into this resolution that is up, but perhaps it too, as you said, I think is unfair for those people who own property or housing and they're occupied. Now, I can understand why the county might want to do that, because it brings in additional revenue. Previously, before this proposition was rescinded, I think, back in the year before last, some people did not get an opportunity to come to be, some people still make that. So I would ask the board in their wisdom, please to vote this proposition down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Niels. Next up is Louis Doxson.
I yield my attention.
Thank you, Mr. Doxson. Next up is Mr. Schumay.
I yield my attention.
And Mr. Schumay, next up is Gary Poindexter, mayor from Hur.
Mr. Chairman and board members, thank you for your time and hospitality tonight, and thank you for your service. For the record, I am Gary Poindexter from the Stan River District and the town of Hur. Many of you already know me as a town mayor, and I'm here to speak in that capacity, but also as a citizen of Pennsylvania County. In reference to the reimplementation of the solid waste fee, as a naturalist and a science person, and this was in the close term, and a test of a science teacher, I can certainly tell you that I appreciate clean groundwater as a natural resource and the needs protected. Why we have to have the federal and state regulations in place to make landfills expensive to build and operate, as you think. Certainly, I support having the fee because it's a necessity. I'm not here to oppose the fee at all, but I do have a couple of concerns about its implementation. There has been some mention of a number of low income, and I have a challenge families in the county and in the town. Perhaps we could consider implementing the fee in two stages, perhaps do half of it one year and then pull away the second year to lighten the load a little bit. Another concern I have is on behalf of the residents of the three towns. Two of the towns already have a fee in place, and in our budget proposal this year, we have it on the table to begin having one as well. And of course, the fees are two distinct features. The county one is for landfill, the town fees are for collecting. But when I add up what our proposed fee is on top of the county's proposed fee, that is two hundred and sixteen dollars a year for a resident of the town. So I'm of the opinion that perhaps the county and the three towns should enter into some type of dialogue as to how we might mitigate the load of the burden a little bit for those who are inside the town, how we can address the needs of the county, the needs of the town, take care of the environment, or that it's a win-win for everyone. But I think we do need to take a closer look at this picture as to how it affects those in the three towns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Poindexter. Mayor Poindexter was the last person to sign up, so I closed the public hearing at eight forty-two. Motion has been made. I'm Mr. Scars, but I have a second. Seconded by Mr. Baller. Looking to discuss, there's discussion only. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Blackstock.
I think that, I know that I'm already hurrying some concerns from my constituents and other constituents across the county concerning the reimplementation of the solid waste fee. And I suspect that over the next few months, we will have to revisit this issue and look at the way we do exemptions and make some clarification concerning the solid waste fee. I, for one, and I understand why the board did it, and I'm going to vote for this tonight, I don't like that it being imposed on the citizens around Christmas, Christmas holidays. I think that's not very wise, because a lot of people are under financial stress at that time of year, and I think it probably would benefit us to charge a fee in two stages during the year. That's just my opinion. But I do think we will be making some adjustments to this, to the solid waste fee implementation over the next twelve months.
Thank you, Ms. Blackstock. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say just for a gentleman, but I would prefer a phased in implementation
Any other comments? Mr. Baller.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I mean, I'm torn on this one. I hate to vote for this, I don't like it myself, but we all know the concessions we made on the real estate, we went to always town only, everybody said spread this tax increase around, that this is a central part of it, or we had to raise real estate substantially. But I don't like this always, but also it would be strange to people, it's very expensive on a landfill operation. You've got to close and open this, the sale, it's four and a half million dollars per year. The only alternative we talked about was either just close the landfill, privatize, everybody knows what that costs, it's very expensive, it's necessary, but I hate this fee myself. I voted to get rid of last time, but I didn't want the real estate to propose fifteen cents, so that's why I'm going to vote for this. And hopefully, as these pipelines come into play, we can reduce that fee quickly, I hope. But I also agree with Dr. Mill and Mr. Blackstock, I think it's a whole lot to put on everybody at one time, I've been thinking of it ever since we proposed it, one time fee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other discussion? Just for citizens' information, one of the reasons the December date was chosen was because it was impossible, still have discussion, it was impossible from a technology standpoint, and we have our treasurer and our commissioner of revenue both back here that can attest to this, to have gotten this on the books, to be able to apply it for partial payment in July and impartial payment in December. That's why it occurred. It wasn't that we were trying to do it all at one time, but it was necessary in order to complete the budget year that the funds be on the tail end. And Mr. Baller did articulate that, and I attended every one of the meetings, it was overwhelming, meetings, that this was potentially the fairest way to spread the unpleasantry across with our citizens. It is very expensive to run a landfill. You know, certainly if we get the biggest things we can have to drive our taxes down and our fees down would be good solid economic development. Could come from pipelines, but it could come, as you all have heard, we, Mr. Rowe and Ms. Wolf is doing a great job in economic development, and we've got companies that are really interested and are looking at Pennsylvania County. That's the way we can get your tax rates down. And we're also looking at best practices for the landfill, and hopefully we can become better at how we use our landfill and potentially lower some of those costs. So we are very cognizant of what kind of burden this puts on you, and we share it with you because we're paying them, too. However, I will have to support this motion because I know that we need to have a balanced budget, and we need to pay for our landfill. All right, call for the vote.
Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry, Mr. Scars. I need to hit the button, but...
It didn't show up.
I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, I did get a phone call today, and we are going to advertise this as quickly as possible for the exemption process, so there are a lot of people concerned about having to wait till December to do their exemptions. But I think there may be some misconceptions on that, on what is considered an inhabitable residence as well. I think as long as there's no water, no electricity to the structure, it will be able to get an exemption. But again, we're going to be advertising as quickly as possible so people can start that exemption process, you know, probably within the next month or so, which will, everyone will be showing up at the same time in December to try to get an exemption, so I hope that will help a few of the people that were concerned out there. Thank you.
Okay, please cast your votes. Okay, all votes have been cast, but Baller. Vote carries six to one. We're down to unfinished business. Do we have any? Yes, Mr. Smith.
I listen.
Thank you. We're down to new business, letter of agreement for tobacco grant, Kane Creek Center Shell Building, Mr. Sides.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Later part of last year, the board authorized an application to the Tobacco Commission to build a shell building in Kane Creek Center Industrial Park. That grant was approved by the Tobacco Commission January the ninth. They have, in their routine procedures, they have sent us a grant agreement form, and it's now a requirement that that be signed and approved by the county, outlining the terms of the grant. Again, this is the same way we've done tobacco grants in the past. There's additional wording in the motion that actually appropriates the money as well, but we would just like for you to approve the grant agreement for the Kane Creek Shell Building, which is in the amount of a million, five hundred thousand dollars. It authorized the county administrator to sign all documents. I've also added that we are not ready to start spending that money at this particular moment. This project, if you recall from past applications, involves working with a partner on the financing of the building, and we will be going through our R and P process, soliciting proposals for the design deal, so it's likely that you'll hear about this project again before it happens, but we just would like for you to authorize, sign the grant agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Sides. Are there any questions for Mr. Sides? Motion's been made by Mr. Davis, but I have a second. Seconded by Mr. Scars. Mr. Davis, would you make the motion forward, please?
I make a motion that the county accept and appropriate the Kane Creek Center Shell Building grant in the amount of one million, five hundred thousand for the Tobacco Region Revitalization Commission to the Industrial Development Fund, and authorize the county administrator to sign all necessary documents.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded. Any discussion on the motion? If seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. Mr. Baller. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Sides. We're down to twelve B, letter of agreement tobacco grant, Shell Building for Project Apple. Mr. Sides again.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. This is the same process. This was an application to the Tobacco Commission for funding in the amount of two million, three hundred thousand dollars for a shell building, Project Apple, also approved by the Tobacco Commission January ninth, and also we have received the grant agreement documents. This particular project, we are still working with the Tobacco Commission on the debt use of these funds. We've got Mr. Rowe and a couple of active possibilities to utilize this funding, but at this point, in order to keep the project alive with this grant agreement document fully and the money appropriated, there's no need to...
A motion by Mr. Scars, but I have a second. Motion made by Mr. Scars, seconded by Mr. Davis. Can you verbally make your motion, Mr. Scars?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the county accept and appropriate a total of two point three million for the Pennsylvania County Shell Building for Project Apple grant from the Tobacco Region Revitalization Commission to the Industrial Development Fund, but the condition that funds are not expended unless there is a company commitment and authorize the county administrator to sign all necessary documents.
Motion was made, seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. Mr. Baller.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. We're down to twelve C, Resource Officer Grant. I think Mr. Smith is going to take this one.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. We received a request to submit a grant to the state for four school resource officers for elementary schools, for four of our ten elementary schools. That does require a level match of about sixty, sixty-one thousand dollars a year for the next four years, and we are seeking your approval to do that. In the fifth year, that will become a hundred percent county cost, and the personnel cost will be about two hundred and, I think, twenty thousand dollars personnel only. We're bringing this before you because this is not something we voted on before in the budget. You have made reserves or contingencies for mid-year appropriations, but we would need your authorization to appropriate this for us, Mr. Thomas. Happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do you want to have any questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Motion made by Mr. Scars, seconded by Mr. Blackstock. Mr. Scars, can you read the motion, please?
Well, it's not showing up on my iPad, but I make a motion that we provide for the grant for the additional four resource officers.
All right, have a motion, seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Blackstock.
As in a work session, we discussed looking for monies within the budget, current budget, and also with the school system to find ways to fund this before we decide to approve additional funding to the upcoming year's budget.
Any other discussion? Good night, please cast your vote. All votes have been cast, Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. We're down to item twelve D, which from the consent agenda, seven I, from the consent agenda, courthouse janitorial.
It's section seven I on the consent agenda, this motion to reconsider is just to vote on this item separately, and if you get a motion second, reconsider to have additional discussion on this. On twelve. It's on page seventy-one.
I got it.
Got it. That's what I have.
I'm going to make a motion, try to get a second on the floor for discussion of this. I make a motion to award a courthouse janitorial services contract to Eric's Cleaning Service in the amount of thirty-five thousand one hundred forty dollars, with the option to review the full additional one-year terms.
Okay, motion made. I got the motions. Can you take the second off? Can you take the mover off and let, let Mr. Blackstock push the button and then?
I can stop it and restart it.
That'll be great. Okay. Mr. Blackstock, if you would make the motion, then we'll have Mr. Davis to second that motion because he was, he needs you to. I get a second on the motion. Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I ask to just be removed from the consent agenda. I don't want to get into a lot of detail because it can, it can become a personnel issue, but I think it's very important that the board, all board members, understand the ramifications. When you go to private contracts, employees stand to lose their jobs, and we've had no in-depth discussion on this board about employees losing their jobs. You know, I'm sitting here wondering when I vote for this contract, have I got an employee who has been here twenty-four, twenty-five years? I don't know. Is it within a year or two retirement, or do I have a single mother that's over there been with the county one or two years, is cleaning the con, cleaning the courthouse? I want to know more, I think as a board member. We should know, we run the county, we answer to the citizens, we should know in detail when things like this are proposed, and I have, I have a lot of heartburn with voting to go to private contracts when I know that it affects people that, county on their paycheck. These people don't make a lot of money, a lot of them have been with the county for years, a lot of them are our neighbors, are the people that we go to church with, and it saddens me that we have no discussion on this and, you know, just make it a matter of voting and move on, and I don't like it.
Any other discussion? Comments, I have, I value your opinion, Mr. Blackstock, and have certain concerns any time that's potentially any employee that could be jeopardized. We have great employees, we care a great deal about them. You know, it's a very tough position to step, set up here sometimes, and Mr. Blackstock and rest of this board knows very well, you have to make some very difficult decisions sometimes. But I'm trying real hard now to really reflect and remember what was said, and it didn't matter really what locality you went to, the message was the same in all of our town hall meetings. We understand the condition the county's in. We don't like a tax increase, we don't like paying solid waste fees, but we understand the situation you're in. And one of the things that was a theme and mentioned multiple times at every single meeting was that the county must look at reductions and cuts wherever they deemed that they was reasonable and responsible to control our budget situation. That does make it extremely difficult when you get into any, any possibilities of those situations. So it is a very difficult vote in time, but we all knew we were there. It wasn't very pleasant in most cases of going around to the town halls and listening to the folks, but that's what we did, and we heard you loud and clear, and we're trying to do what our citizens have told us to do, to be lean and be very accountable for all the expenditures, and that's what we're going to try to do. I can give you that pledge, and I know every man from one end to the other will echo the same sentiment, that we're going to give you that pledge, that we're going to be good stewards of the funds. Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, sir, Mr. Barber.
I don't know if it's Mr. Hicks or Mr. Smith, but what would be the net savings of privatizing services?
Courthouse Janitorial's been privatized for the last year. Sheriff's Department used to have inmate labor workforce do that. We are doing this contract less than a year ago, this is the first renewal, there'll be no change in cost.
Okay, any other discussion? Call for the vote. Mr. Barber. Motion carries six to one. All right, we're down to...
We have long maintenance, too, as a motion reconsider.
Right, that's what I'm...
It's section J.
Section J on page ninety-six of your board package.
I found it this time.
Long maintenance. Mr. Smith, will you take this one also?
I'll tell you what, I'm going to let Mr. Hicks do this, he was deeply involved in the details. I understand the numbers part, but he understands the process.
Good evening. As we started looking at potential cost saves, one of the, I have an entire area, was contracting out of loan services. It takes about twenty-eight hundred dollars for all of our staff times, no grass in the spring and the summer and the early. While we advertise for bids, we got one bid to take care, or it's the, the winning bid to do all of our, our mowing of all county facilities, was thirty-five thousand one hundred and forty dollars, and that was the two, sorry, I want to call out something. And we too were trying to learn the systems. As I mentioned, that the, the low bid for loan maintenance was for prior contracting LLC in about thirty-eight thousand four hundred dollars. We had our staff calculate what our rate cost was to do the mowing, and by contracting it out, depending on what we do, some part-time help, it would save us anywhere from around fourteen thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars a year. And as, as you are aware, that was one of the considerations of our cost saves going into the budget. So my recommendation at this time is we award a bid to prior contracting LLC in about thirty-eight thousand four hundred dollars, and they already took on a move forward on that work.
Any questions for Mr. Hicks?
Did I heard you say this was a part-time help that we wouldn't be hiring anymore, or was this a full-time position?
To get the savings, if it is one full-time position, that would be taking away a portion of the part-time help. And based on the actual number of hours that it takes per year, so, you know, a full-time per year is two thousand eight hours, and our service is about one four hundred hours total. And that would be at least one full-time portion of the part-time person.
Any other questions for Mr. Hicks? Seeing none, call for the vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would just say, I want to make a motion, I'll make the motion to get, to get it going, I'll make the motion to award the lawn care maintenance contractor, contracting LLC in the amount of thirty-eight thousand four hundred dollars.
Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, can you get a second, please? Motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mrs. Scars. Any discussion? Mr. Blackstock, can you answer?
I just want to say the same thing that I said previously because I didn't know jail inmates were cleaning the courthouse, had stopped cleaning the courthouse or who was cleaning. Before these items get to the board, I think we need to have discussion on the human effects to our staff. Our number one asset in this county is our employees. A lot of our employees have worked for years for peanuts, and we deserve to at least have a public discussion as to why we're taking these actions. I'm not saying that they're not warranted, in some cases they may be, but I'm saying we should be transparent, and we should discuss these items publicly before we push them through on a consent agenda and award contracts to private firms.
Any other discussion? All for the vote. All votes have been cast, Mr. Barber. Motion carries, uh, sixty-two, five to two, I'm sorry, motion carries five to two. All right, we're down to appointments. CPMT Board, Mr. Smith.
Mr. Hicks don't handle that.
Okay.
Do you need my iPad?
I've got it right here. Since it's involved here, I don't think we're going to do that.
Well, we already...
Reluctantly, it's involved.
I've heard from our CSA consultant this evening, and I wonder their recommendations
that assessment is the person that supervises the CSA staff, probably just having a more active role in the CPMT board, and that supervisor has to be me, so their recommendation is that's rich big, CPMT board is the board advisor, and I'm also the director of the
Okay, any questions for, uh, Mr. Hicks? Got a motion and a second motion made by Mr. Blackstock, seconded by Mr. Barber, can you give me a formal motion?
I make a motion effective May fifteenth, two thousand eighteen, calling Richard N. Hicks Assistant County Administrator of Pennsylvania County Community Policy Advantage Team.
Any discussion on the motion? Please cast your vote. Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. We're down to reappointments for the Institute for Advanced Learning and Research Board of Trustees, Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir, Ms. Joyce Wright, her term on the Institute for Advanced Learning and Research Board expires on June thirtieth, she is still eligible for a second term, and has been recommended that she be reappointed for a three-year term beginning July one, two thousand
The board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, we reappoint Ms. Joyce Myers.
Joyce Wright.
I mean Joyce, first one.
Can you cancel that, though? Can you make, can you make?
I was going to try to go in and make him the mover, if you'll tell me who's going to second.
As I told you, we got a little glitch because it'd be, Mr. Barber, technology wouldn't work this one, this afternoon, even the tech guys couldn't get it working this afternoon. Motion made by Mr. Barber, seconded by Mr. Davis. Any discussion on the motion? Seen none, I'll ask everyone to cast their votes. Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Matters from work session, we have one I noted to carry over, and that's Gun Darlin', CBBG Application, Mr. Sides.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, if you recall, it was thoroughly discussed this afternoon. What we're looking for tonight is if you support the application, we're asking that you authorize by motion us to submit a planning grant, which will survey the area, determine the need, estimate the cost, give us information that will be necessary for a future actual community development grant, so tonight we're just asking to authorize submission of a planning grant.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Sides? The board's pleasure. Got a motion by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Blackstock, can you make that motion, all?
Yes, I would like to put that, Mr. Sides, in the motion for Gun Darlin', which is in my district, for that grant.
Got a motion and a second motion was made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mrs. Blackstock, any discussion on the motion?
Add to it that we authorize the county administrator to sign all unnecessary documents.
That's sort of how it is. All right, any more discussion? All right, any more discussion? Please cast your vote. Mr. Barber.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Are there any other matters from the work session, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
We're down to board member reports. We start with Dr. Miller tonight.
I have no comments, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Mr. Davis?
No, I don't.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Blackstock?
I have none.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstock. Mr. Palmer?
I'd like to make the public aware that starting this Saturday, the Town of Gretna will be hosting each third Saturday a Gretna Cruise Inn, very similar to what the Town of Chatham is enjoying, and so starting May will end in October.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Mr. Barber?
I hate technology, but I'm glad we're doing it.
Mr. Scares?
I have no comments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I would just like to point out a couple things. One was to congratulate and make sure the citizens are all aware of the recent recognition of Chatham Hall, and it is a beautiful secret sitting back there. If you hadn't been back there and been through the, uh, the field, it's very much rich in history, and they were recently, recently recognized, and they enjoy visits. So if you hadn't been back and taken a tour of it and all, give them a call and go up there and do it. I have done it in the last 12 to 18 months, and it, it was very pleasant, a lot of history in, in that whole school, but in particular in the chapel, and they're, they're very willing to give you that. Also, I want to congratulate our career in technical students. Once again, they have done outstanding job, a job both on the district, regional, state, and national levels, Precision Machine Program and the other programs out there continue to be a driving force for the economic development here in this region. And if you don't believe that Pennsylvania County is the driving force behind that, just spend a little time tonight before you leave with Mr. Rowe, Ms. Wolf, they can share a lot more with you about that. And also want to, with, with a little bit of sadness, I want to congratulate Mr. Roy Byrd. He, he's announced he's not going to sit in the election. He's been such a great citizen and so willing to give up his time and talents. He loves the area, loves the community, he's given a lot back, and he will be greatly missed, but he certainly deserves to enjoy a little bit of time, and we all know the difficulties he's been through recently, so keep, please keep him in your thoughts and your prayers. That's all I have, and county administrator. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two quick things, both related to two things you said. One is to congratulate some of this party, and that's Mr. Jim Davis, who's our Public Safety Director, is professional and knowledgeable, a E911 center operator and emergency management coordinator and public safety professional, and he will be here this, we wish him great luck in his next venture, which I won't very smidgen of, but if it's, way he's playing it out is a perfect, just second career for him, and congratulate the person professionally very much. Second item is about our career in tech students. They just installed a dog park sign at a brand new dog park at the Pennsylvania Pet Center. 100% of that project is paid for through donations and grants, particularly through the Chatham Rotary Club and the Friends of the Pennsylvania Pet Center through fundraising campaigns. It's a, going to be a tremendous community asset that's 100% privately banked. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion that we enter closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We enter closed session.
Motion made by Mr. Davis, seconded by Dr. Miller.
We got to read that.
You got to read that.
You want me to just read it, Mr. Chairman, please?
Okay, the two items tonight for closed session under section 17 of your agenda. The first one is constituted as a legal counsel employed to retain by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to prevent the closure of meeting merely because an attorney representing the public bodies in attendance or is consulting on the matter. Legal authority of Virginia Code, section 2.2, 37, 11, and 8. Subject matter, Department of Social Services. Purpose, discussion employment issues and concerns. The second item is discussion concerning a prospective business or industry or the expansion of existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the businesses or industries interested in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Legal authority of Virginia Code, section 2.2, 37, 11, and 8. Subject matter, Project Calcium. Purpose, prospective business up.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. We got a motion by Mr. Davis, seconded by Dr. Miller. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Barber?
Yes.
Mr. Blackstock?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes.
I give the courtroom time to clear between the start and the close session.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I will ask the board to certify the closed session. We just went into, be it resolved that at the meeting of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors on May 15, 2018, the board hereby certifies by our recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting were promised in the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identifying the motion authorized in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. If any member believes that there was a departure from the requirements of the code, he shall so stay prior to the vote indicating the substance of the departure. The statement shall be recorded in the minutes of the board. I will now call roll call vote. Supervisor Barber?
Yes.
Supervisor Blackstock?
Yes.
Supervisor Davis?
Yes.
Supervisor Farmer?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Scares? Yes. Supervisor Warren?
Yes. As chairman of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors, which I'm honored to serve as chairman for these gentlemen, they all do outstanding work, and I'm very proud to be a small part of them, I have a statement to read. On March 20, 2018, the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors conducted a legal closed session to discuss issues related to the Pennsylvania County Department of Social Services and employment environment situation. At no time during the closed session, in full compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, did the board vote on the DSS situation. In fact, to date, the board has never voted in open or closed session on the DSS situation. That being said, the board and county administration take the DSS allegations very seriously and continue to closely monitor the DSS situation. The board is awaiting the completion of the Virginia Department of Social Services local assessment, anticipated to be completed in mid-June before determining whether or not to take any appropriate related actions. That being said, I declare the meeting adjourned.